Commissioners, let me just mention that because the chairman and the vice chairman are not here today, one of you has the power to call the meeting to order and your first order of business is to choose a chairman pro temp or a temporary chairman.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Duran for that position.
Commissioner Blankenhorn, you need to call the meeting to order first. One of you calls the meeting to order.
Go ahead.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order and make a motion to nominate Commissioner Duran to be the chairman pro temp.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You're the chair.
Okay. So, okay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Sánchez? Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Present.
Commissioner Duran?
Present. Mayor, Commissioner, I want to pledge allegiance to the--
Everybody would stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioners, approval of the agenda. Commissioners, do you have any changes?
So move it as presented, Chairman. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barone, a second by Commissioner Blankenhorn. Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Move on to citizens' concerns. Citizens wishing to speak shall have the opportunity to do so for five minutes. No action might be taken.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Probably you all remember me from two weeks ago. My name is Martha Hadamio. I am the secretary of the hospital union. And I just came today to say thank you. Thank you on behalf of our hospital staff and our concerned community members for listening to us, for convening a meeting on the 29th where we can all sit together in the same forum and discuss our concerns. As you know, we are very concerned about the mass exodus of all of our qualified medical staff at the hospital. We're concerned about the future of our community hospital. And we are very grateful that we can have the opportunity to sit and meet and discuss this together. Our CEO, who I guess I should now say our former CEO as of last week, said that it's a national trend in healthcare for outsourcing, sending jobs and resources to other communities, and doing layoffs, and even small hospitals closing throughout the country. And this restores our faith that maybe we can reverse this trend here in Taos and keep our community hospital local and vibrant and thriving. So again, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Silky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Morning.
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 I just want to use this opportunity to honor Rudy Pacheco, who passed last week. He was a real crucial gentleman in this community and involved in a lot of affairs, especially enjoyed working with him on the regional water plan. And he was a Republican. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Good morning, Commissioner, Commissioners. I'm Jerry Hoegriff. Thanks for giving me just a moment of your time this morning. I wanted to speak just briefly about the dispatch communications. I was invited to a stakeholders' meeting on the 7th. I attended that. I received the budget and have had an opportunity to review that. First, let me dispel any rumors that might be out there of my opposing a move from the command center, because I do not. I think the proposed move and the location is best for the community, and I do wholeheartedly support that. There are some, well, many things being talked about in our community. My issue, or what I wanted to address with the commission, is the fact that there will be three consoles moved and not the five that dispatch has always had at the previous location at Town Hall, Command Center, and so forth. That's four emergency response positions and an admin. With that and the 77, approximately $77,000 cut in funding estimated for the 2014-2015 budget year, I began to do some homework and research, and I found that the moving of the consoles is very costly and at 110 or so-plus thousand dollars per console to be moved. I certainly understand that the money has to come from somewhere, and if it's simply not available, then it's not. But I do want to just stress how critical that the communications are to our community. An emergency dispatch center, I know, does not go lightly with this commission or town council for that matter, and it is appreciated. And so I won't dwell onto that issue. But if there's any possible way to increase the amount of working consoles, emergency operator console, I would encourage this commission to look strongly at that and to look strongly at a way of funding that long-term in the future. I've been somewhat vocal in my campaign for sheriff in talking about an eighth percent tax that's going to sunset in a year, year and a half, and possibly replacing that with a countywide emergency communications, emergency medical and behavioral health tax base. You can go up to one-quarter percent if we simply replace the one-eighth. That would generate significant revenues that could then be utilized to save money out of the general fund budget, which would relieve funds for much-needed other things, such as road repairs, investigations unit for the sheriff's department, and other things. Now, the tax cannot be used for those things, but it certainly can be used for communications, emergency medical, and behavioral health, three issues that are very critical to our community, as I think we would all appreciate. If there's any possible way that the commission could look closer at how many consoles and emergency answering points workstations, I would encourage us to do that. I think it's critical. The dispatch and the communications, as we all appreciate, if you look at it like a chain, they're that critical link in the center that connects those that need help to those that provide help. And with a weak link in that chain, and I'm not saying there is or will be, but the potential weak link could be devastating to our community. So that's what I wanted to bring up. I know it's not an agenda item, and I know it's nothing that can be discussed at length or a decision made upon today, but I wanted to plant that seed because it is concerning, and it's also concerning to people that I have talked to. Thank you, and Mr. Archileta, I guess you had a response.
Yeah, Mr. Hoegriff, thank you for coming and appreciate your concerns, and we've definitely, the commission and staff, have looked at that. Just to sort of clarify a little bit, we're bringing over the telephony that will allow us to have five councils upstairs. The other thing that we're doing is we're in negotiations right now with Forest Service for them to bring over two additional councils from their dispatch also that we could possibly use in a state of emergency. What I mean by the telephony is that we have the ability to go up to five councils. The three councils that we're doing, we're purchasing brand-new, and that's everywhere from a desk, a chair, to the computer, to every portion of that council that's going to be there, and that's what the commission is spending a lot of money on. But we're also looking at the possibility of bringing over a couple of other councils from the old dispatch center, having those hooked up and ready to go also for administration, for training, and also in case of an emergency that we can actually, one of our councils go down, we could move over to the other council in there. So we're taking all those into consideration. We're looking at that. But as far as the funding goes, you know, we're only able to purchase actually from wire to finish, and I mean up to the chair, that the person's going to sit up. It's going to actually be three brand-new councils with state-of-the-art equipment. So we will have the ability to do that, and then in the future hopefully have that available.
That's excellent, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the forward-thinking ness of repurposing the existing console and equipment, the chair, the desk, the computer stations, and so forth. I mean, I think that's critical and perhaps could be answering part of the concern that I've heard throughout my visiting within the community and so forth. I like that. I like that a lot. And yes, obviously, an admin console for all the warrant database and so forth. It was just over a year ago that we cleaned all of that up, found some 7,000 warrants that were in error. And we spent a lot of time and effort. I would hate for us to digress and allow that to happen again by not having an admin console to keep up with those kind of things, or the personnel. But personnel is a whole other matter, and I know you're very much aware of that situation, so I won't go into that. I appreciate your time. Thank you. And if there's anything that I can do, I do intend to remain active. Not really a stakeholder yet, but I'm pretty close, and I am a very concerned citizen, and I do have a lot of experience and knowledge in communications, having managed two centers in my 26-year career. So I look forward to working with you, the key word "with you" on this matter and many other matters in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question. Steve, what's the one-eighth that's going to sunset in a year and a half? I mean, that was something that Jerry mentioned. I don't--
I'm not sure exactly what tax he was talking about, so.
Go ahead, sir.
Commissioners and Blankenhorn, my understanding is that's a healthcare tax that the county currently has, and it will expire in a year to year and a half. And in the big picture, my understanding is the Federal Healthcare Act, the Obamacare, is supposed to take place of that for states and communities and locals and so forth. Now, whether that comes to pass or not, I'm not here to judge on that. But that's the one that's my understanding that will sunset. It's currently a one-eighth percent, and it could simply be replaced. It's a consumer-based tax, so it's fair. It's not property-related. It's anybody that buys anything at any store, whether they be a resident or a tourist in our community. And I like that because those people may also need the emergency services and so forth that could come along with that additional funding.
Just for clarification, Commissioners, that tax will not sunset. The commission does have the authority to sunset. It would have to be done by referendum out to the commission. It's the indigent care tax. We've been, staff has been meeting on that tax to discuss, you know, the possibility of how much money that would bring in and the possibility of repurposing that tax for other issues that Taos County may have. So if the commission chooses to go that route, we can definitely do a summary for the commission and then move in that direction. I believe most of the commissioners are aware of it, and I know we've had some discussion on it, and Commissioner Blankenhorn has been, in several meetings, referenced that tax.
And the one-quarter tax for communications and behavioral health, is that tax, does that tax have to be instituted by referendum?
Yes, sir. Yes, it would have to be.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Move on to item number six, minutes, discussion, consideration, and decisions regarding the following June 24, 2014 regular meeting. Commissioners?
Move to approve. Second.
That a motion by Commissioner Blankenhorn, a second by Commissioner Barone. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Go to item seven, contracts, agreements, MOUs, RFPs, and bids, discussion, consideration, and decisions regarding the following memorandum of understanding between Taos, between county of Taos and the village of Cuesta for EMS services. Mr. Archileta?
We do have the mayor of Cuesta--
Oh, mayor! I'd like to recognize the mayor of the village of Cuesta, Mr. Gallegos.
Should I stand by your side or--
Good to see you this morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I stand before you this morning for the renewal of the Cuesta EMS service, a vital portion of northern New Mexico's EMS services or ambulance service up in Cuesta. This has been a memorandum of understanding that Taos County has with Cuesta for a certain amount of years. I know the mayor's here today and ready to present some numbers to the commission as to the number of calls and stuff that they're responding to up there. I think this would be something that I would support as far as a renewal of this contract for EMS services in the northern part of the county. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Archileta. Mr. Commissioner, Chair, and fellow Commissioners, as we've done business with Taos County for quite a few years on this agreement, over the years we've seen an increase in calls and the amount of service at the village of Cuesta has been able to assist Taos County in reaching those isolated areas in Costilla and Amalia and Serra and those areas. We've noticed that the numbers have been steady, roughly about 160 to 175 calls, which is about, I would say, almost half of what we do locally in the area as well. Being that we've become a new, there's been a new council change, there's been a new administrator, new finance director, we've also continued with a new service contract with a company that does our collections and our billings, and we've seen a steady increase in the past couple of months as we've gotten our ducks in a row, I guess. We've started seeing some income to provide that additional third full-time EMT service that we need to have there in Cuesta for the round-the-clock provision that we need to have. And as we've worked before with past commissioners, we've commented before you today as well that we continue to do that service for our constituents throughout the northern part of New Mexico. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or concerns about how things have gone, but we've been, we've got a young crew of first responders and EVO drivers, so we're starting to load up again with some new enthusiastic employees there, so they're eager to continue to provide that service.
Commissioners?
And mayor, I just want to play devil's advocate for a second, you know. You know, we have Costilla all the way to Yon San Juan and Yan de la Guagua, and you know, there's a lot of-- I distance areas and, you know, continue to talk about better medical service, better response times, stuff like that. And, you know, as the county's budget, the town's budget, Cuesta's budget continues to shrink, you know, we just, you know, there's a possibility, and I just want to feel, you know, get a feeling out, there's a possibility that a, there's a tax that can be enacted that would actually take care of a lot of, or all of that service, and we possibly could, you know, enact that. I'm just curious on the feeling of what you guys there are quizzed or feeling about that.
Well, I think, Commissioner, that one of the things that we're looking for is trying to find that revenue, have that consistency, so we're not always having to depend so much on those that are having difficulty trying to make those payments. And if a tax needed to be done and it was going to be beneficial and provided a better service throughout the county, then I'd be in favor of that just for the reason that, you know, everybody deserves to have that, have that call and make sure that there's somebody to respond, and we do it in a timely manner because a lot of times, as you've seen over the years where we've had, you've had calls and you have an ambulance in Peñasco, and then somebody's in, down in Canoan or somewhere in the area, and, you know, we spread ourselves real thin, and unfortunately, we just don't have that resource to keep enough ambulance service available and EMTs on the clock. So with the tax, I think if it's done the right way, we'd be able to make, show some leaps and bounds as to providing a better service. So I think we need to look at that, but I would be definitely in favor of seeing something like that come around.
Thank you. I was just curious. Thanks.
I thought maybe this might be an interview for commissioners or something.
Anybody else? Commissioner Blankenhorn? No?
What's the amount that we're, Mr. Archileta?
70,000, as it was last year.
So move for approval, Chairman. Second.
That a motion by Commissioner Barone, a second by Commissioner Blankenhorn. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Blankh--
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Move on to item B, discussion, consideration, and decisions regarding the following renewal 12 TC-213-116 Moti Corporation. Mr. Archileta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I guess staff is out today, so I'll be here in front of you most of the day, taking the bullets for them. I stand before you, Commissioners, with Motiva Corporation. This is our lobbyist position. This is a contract that Taos County is wanting to renew with Mr. Robert Apodaca and Motiva Corporation. Mr. Apodaca had provided lobbying services for us. Last year, we put it out for a request for proposal. He was chosen by the committee to provide the service, and we would like to extend the contract for another year with him for the same amount of money. As you know, Commissioners, we budgeted 50,000 in this line item for this, but the contract is only for $35,000, so we were able to negotiate the price down. One of the things that we've been looking at, and I'm glad the mayor's here today to talk about this a little bit, is that we've also been wanting to partner with the town of Taos. We had asked Holy Cross Hospital also to partner with us so that we all had the same lobbyist. I'm not sure how the council's going to go with that or how the mayor wants to continue to proceed with that. But our hope would be that eventually from Taos County, we would have one lobbyist. That person would represent all of us, and we could go down with our needs. If we don't do that, basically what happens is that we have two lobbyists down there competing for the same pool of money and sometimes, you know, winning for the town, winning for the hospital, or winning for the county. And, you know, if we would prioritize those needs, what's best for everybody as a whole, and then go with the same lobbyist to that, I think it would be a win-win for everybody. But that's our hope for the future, and I'm not sure exactly how everybody's going to feel about that. Stand for any questions.
Commissioners?
Mr. Archileta, I think it's a great idea. I think we need to move forward. It kind of takes the pressure off of our legislators, too, that, you know, they're not having to, again, you know, we go in as one voice, you know, all together. It works out better. In this response, or in, not only they represent us in the state level, but they also will be represented in the federal level also, is that correct?
That's correct. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I know that Mr. Apodaca has stood before the commission and provided a list of items that he's done and a list that he continues to do. Mr. Apodaca works for us pretty much full-time, where I talk to him probably once a week. We try to set up different meetings for economic development. He is down today with Commissioner Sanchez and with some of the staff at the CDBG allocation hearing that's going to happen this morning or is happening right now in Albuquerque. I can tell the commission that the night or the week before the actual CDBG grant was due, Mr. Apodaca and myself sat till almost 12:30 midnight redoing the whole grant application. Because of his expertise at Department of Finance, there were certain key words that we needed to make sure that we stuck in there. He went through the whole application process with us. We retyped it, rewrote it, and because of that, got really high marks by DFA as far as the CDBG process for this year. And so our hope is that we're going to have about $450,000 to $500,000 awarded sometime this morning. Mr. Apodaca called me about 7:30 this morning, said that he would text me as soon as we knew anything for Taos County, so I'm hoping to hear from that before this commission meeting ends this morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Thanks. Well, I'm glad, Steve. I appreciate the fact that you and Robert have developed this good working relationship. I think it makes a big difference, and it's important that we're not just lobbying around the legislative session, that we're keeping on top of all of the possibilities throughout the year. If we do something with the town, then I guess it would just be a matter of convincing them that Mr. Apodaca would be the appropriate choice because we're about to potentially enter in a one-year contract starting now.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I know that Mr. Apodaca has had some conversations with the town last week. He was able to set up a meeting also for next week with Tauski Valley so that we can get involved with the economic development that's happening at Tauski Valley so that we could partner with that. An email that was sent last week also to Mr. Rick Ballas by Mr. Apodaca inviting him to that. So we're wanting to do more of those same events together and make sure that we move forward to that. And I didn't see, I haven't seen the response yet, but, you know, to me, it was an awesome opportunity for, again, the town, the county, Tauski Valley, to all the three government agencies to partner together for economic development and move forward with that, especially since we have an investor up there right now that's doing some major renovations.
Great. That's also a really good development, and I think if we did this, it would give us a chance to really organize our priorities so that, you know, every district needs to get something, but we also have major priorities for the whole county, and so I really like the idea, and I appreciate you working on it. And I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
No second.
That a motion by Commissioner Blankenhorn, a second by Commissioner Barone. I only have one question, Mr. Archileta. So the contract from today till--
Yes.
--next year, same date?
Yes, sir.
Call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Go to item C, discussion, consideration, and decisions regarding the following, consideration and approval of contract TCC-2014-006 with 4H Contractor Incorporated. Mr. Sanchez?
Chairman, Commissioners, this contract that we're asking you to approve is just the renewal of the existing contract for 4H Construction to complete the construction of the vault at the sheriff's relocated office at 599 Lovato Place. The contract was ran until the end of the fiscal year, so this continues it so we can finish it out.
No additional, I'm sorry, Chairman.
No additional costs.
No additional costs, just that extension of the contract?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners?
So move for approval. Second.
That a motion by Commissioner Barone, a second by Commissioner Blankenhorn. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Black--
Yes.
Commissioner Black--
Yes.
Okay. Go to item D, discussion, consideration, and decisions regarding the following, request for consideration and approval of TCC-2014-011 HEI Incorporated. Mr. Sanchez?
Chairman, Commissioners, this contract is another contract with HEI, which is part of the 911 infrastructure improvements that we need to do. This is going to be for fiber and copper lines that go from the main telephone room at the courthouse into the detention facility and up into the new server room for the new 911 center.
And at what cost is this?
This contract, I believe, is right at 21,000, right in $21,000, $22,000. I don't have that figure at the top of my head. Just FYI, so far, we're right on budget. It looks like the project's going to toe the line, but we'll be right there. It's tight.
So when are they going to do this work?
This work will probably be performed the first, probably the second week of August.
Commissioners?
I'll move to approve. Second.
That a motion by Commissioner Blankenhorn, a second by Commissioner Barone. Call for the vote.
Commissioner--
Yes.
Yes?
Commissioner--
Yes. Chairman, just for one second, Richard, I know since you're here, I want to ask the question about Amalia.
My community center, I believe, speaking to Leandro, or Leandro Cord, our finance director, there's $50,000 that is going back into the project. I've spoken to Anita Padilla, and we're going to start hopefully with some of the rust remediation and some of the other small stuff that we don't have to have permitting for to continue moving the project forward, and that way, when we do get our grant, we'll be able to hopefully get a certificate of occupancy. We recently put a new heating and air conditioning system-- We recently put a new heating and air conditioning system in the meeting room at the Yanocimado Community Center. And so, there's a unit heater there that, basically, is still brand-new, and that's what's planned for Amalia Community Center, so we're going to repurpose that heater. That'll save us about five or six thousand dollars in the one piece of equipment. But we're slowly moving forward with it, and hopefully... I hope, now that nine-one-one is complete, I can spend more time over there, and we can finish it up by springtime, have it occupiable by springtime, if all the paperwork for the grants and everything come through.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to publicly thank, Richard. You've been juggling a lot of projects, and you've been spending a lot of your time, a lot of after-hours, early mornings and late evenings, and I just, again, it doesn't go unnoticed. I know a lot of times, we don't say thank you, and I do appreciate everything that you do out there. I know this nine-one-one has been a huge project, and you've sort of taken the lead on this, and that wasn't our expectation, but it's just the way it happened. So, thank you, and we really appreciate the hard work that you do on that.
Thank you. Just a little FYI note on the nine-one-one project. I have received an email from our Motorola representative, and our equipment, the bulk of it, will probably be in Albuquerque the week of the twenty-ninth, so I'll probably be going down to do an inventory check. And, like I said, it's moving forward. We're a little bit behind on our timeline, but I think we can still make it up, and we'll be good. Any other questions?
Any other commissioners?
That's it. I know you're busy, Richard. I just want to ask.
I haven't forgotten Amalia. Every time I go to Viavidal, I see the community center, and that's the next one on the list, that and the Ag Center. But the community center is very high on my list.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Go to item number eight. Resolutions and ordinance. Discussion, consideration, and decisions regarding the following. Resolution two thousand fourteen dash thirty, a resolution certifying the county fixed asset annual inventory. Ms. Melissa Ortega.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am here today with resolution two thousand fourteen dash thirty to certify the Taos County's annual inventory for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. All department heads have certified their inventory, and I have a copy on file, which will be subject for auditors. By reviewing and approving this resolution, it will satisfy a new audit requirement.
Questions? Any questions?
And alleviate any audit findings, I hope. So, move for approval. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Barone, a second by Commissioner Blackenhorn. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go to item nine. Department matters. Discussion, consideration, and decisions regarding the following. Request for approval of out-of-state travel on actual reimbursements for Mr. Brent Haraumio, Deputy County Manager, to attend the International City County Managers Association. Mr. Haraumio.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Good morning. I would like to ask your permission for... To attend the ICMA Annual Conference. I was appointed to a conference evaluation committee. The conference is going to be held in Charlotte, North Carolina. The cost of the registration is seven hundred and ten dollars for the conference, so I'm asking permission for the conference, as well as actuals for the hotel and meals to attend the conference. And I stand for questions.
Questions?
I just want to ask a question. Can we split this with Questa?
Too bad the mayor's gone. Yeah. I've been a member of ICMA for twelve years, yes, and nine of those years were through Questa.
So, move for approval, Chairman. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Barone, a second by Commissioner Blackenhorn. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go to item B. Discussion of timeline for repeal of the third one-eighth to appear on the general election ballot.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have a work study scheduled for July the twenty-ninth on the topic of that one-eighth and the possibility of repealing it and replacing it with a more general-purpose one-eighth. In preparing for that presentation, I've made the determination that if the commission should choose to try to get an appeal, get a repeal of the ordinance in place prior to January first, there's only one option that's available, and that would be a mail-in ballot. And the timeline on that would be very, very close. I don't know that that's going to be your choice, but in addition to the work study on the twenty-ninth, I would like to add that as an action item, not suggesting that you should do it, but just so that we can meet the timeline if that's necessary.
Mr. Malone, so on this is to change the language on it, so we can use it on a wider, broader?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And the technical process for that would be the repeal of the existing ordinance, which is limited to indigent health care, and then adopting a new one-eighth that was general purpose. That's currently allowed under the statute. It was not allowed back in nineteen eighty-eight, when we first passed that third one-eighth.
And Mr. Archuleta, how much does that generate?
It's right around eight-hundred thousand dollars.
A year?
Yes, sir.
And, Bob, I would just curious, if it goes to the election, and the election was to fail, would then it would... Would it just revert back to the same use that it is now, or?
Exactly. If the election were to fail, it would just continue to be purpose specifically for indigent care.
Okay. I don't have a problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The mail-in is the only option for this year. Is that more expensive operation, to do a mail-in?
I see that Anna isn't here, and I'd ask her to put some figures together for us for the twenty-ninth, and she tells me that that will be an expensive option if we chose to do that. We still can meet... And just to... I'm sort of getting into what we're going to talk about on the twenty-ninth, but the repeal and a new tax can only be effective twice a year, July one and January one. And so, what we're talking about is whether we would meet January one of twenty fifteen or not. And the mail-in ballot is the only approach that would make that possible. All of the other approaches, including putting it on the general election, which would be the least expensive, would only allow us to have it effective July one of twenty fifteen.
So, it's a six-month...
It's a six-month lag.
And there'd be another four-hundred thousand dollars for indigent care at that point.
Correct.
Yeah, great. Well, it is important to give us that option on the twenty-ninth, and...
I thought that it would be, and I just wanted to alert the commission to that.
Thank you.
No action needs needed at this point?
There's no action needed. The county manager has the authority to place this as an action item.
Okay. Thank you. No further discussion? Okay. Go to item C. Discussion, consideration, and decisions regarding the following. Planning Department, request for hearing date for appeal from the Planning Commission, Blackstone Ranch, Major Permit Zero One One, two thousand fourteen. Mr. Rahil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone, staff, members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this morning. I respectfully come before you this morning to request a hearing date for consideration of an appeal of the decision of the Planning Commission regarding Major Development Permit Zero Zero One dash two thousand fourteen. This is the major development permit application submitted or heard by the Planning Commission at their regular meeting in June. The Planning Commission voted to deny the application. The applicant, Blackstone Ranch, through their agent, Mr. Adam Baker Esquire, has submitted an appeal in accordance with the Land Use Regulations two thousand fourteen dash one. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the purpose, again, of us coming before you today is to respectfully request a date for you, the board of county commissioners, would hear this public hearing. We, as planning staff, wanted to see if you wanted to hear this application under a regular meeting, or if you would like to take into consideration scheduling a special meeting. As staff, we would like to respectfully recommend that you consider scheduling a special meeting. The meeting before the Planning Commission lasted or was approximately three and a half hours long. I suspect that this meeting before you, in terms of this appeal, will be similar in length. And having said that, you, as the board of county commissioners, are, based on the Land Use Regulations, are required to hear this appeal within forty-five days of the date that we received the appeal. The applicant has indicated that there are some specific dates that do not work for them for consideration. The dates that they have indicated are August thirteenth through the seventeenth, and the reason that those dates do not work for the applicant is because their hydrologist will be out of town and will not be available, and they want to make sure that their hydrologist is available, should you have any questions regarding Major Development Permit Zero Zero One dash two thousand fourteen. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, having said that, I stand for any questions you may have.
Questions?
Edward, what type of timeframe do we have to be able to hear that? I know it's time-sensitive, I believe. I haven't heard the times.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Barone, based on the Land Use Regulations Ordinance two thousand fourteen dash one, we need to hear this public... This appeal within forty-five days of receipt of the appeal. We received, planning staff for the county received the appeal on July the eleventh, and I may have failed to indicate to you that the applicant has suggested a possible hearing date for you to consider, if you chose to choose to accept this, as August twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, as a special meeting.
What day of the week is that?
It would fall on a Friday. And just an FYI, when we do the addition of the calendar days in receiving the appeal of July the eleventh and factory in August twenty-second, that would put us at forty days within the forty-five-day requirement.
I won't be available that day. My son gets married.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Barone, that was strictly a recommendation by the applicant. Obviously, you certainly have the discretion, if you choose to take this on as a special meeting or a regular meeting, we, as staff, once again, would recommend a special meeting.
Archuleta, today's meeting, we're going pretty quick. I'm here in a regular meeting. One of the meetings, we don't have too much.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we could push it into the afternoon on a regular meeting date, if that's the choice of the commission.
It would work if we have a short agenda. You just might have to postpone some other item for the next regular meeting, but if we had an agenda that we... That staff felt like we could complete in the morning, then it would work.
You can't give notice, we can hear it today.
No, we'd have to publish it. The next regular meeting's August fifth, and then the August nineteenth. We could, if we... If possible, we could front-end load the August fifth meeting, which is two weeks away from now, and then try to keep a light meeting for the August nineteenth and try to get that... Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Archuleta. Based on the Land Use Regulations, there's a requirement of fifteen-day notification requirement to the individuals who participated in the public hearing of... Or the initial Major Development Public Hearing Application. So, in order for them to qualify for the fifteen calendar days, I haven't done the math yet, but I just want to make sure that we take that into consideration, that if there's a possibility of being heard on August the fifth, that we certainly meet the notification. It doesn't appear that we would do so, because obviously, the notification we're going to the Taos News on Friday would not appear till next Thursday, which is conceivably, I think, somewhere in the area of the twenty-fourth or somewhere along those lines. And from that day that the publication, we would need to meet fifteen days in order to qualify for the public hearing, and it appears that August fifth, we would not meet that date.
No, I think what we're suggesting was August nineteenth, actually.
I apologize. And August nineteenth appears doable. It also falls within the days that the applicant indicated that were not good for them.
Were not good for them?
I apologize. Were acceptable. I apologize.
Okay, that's what I thought, so.
Nineteenth would be good.
Nineteenth?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we can shoot for that date, if that's the wish of the commission.
That's tough.
Works for me, thank you.
Then nineteenth?
Yeah, it's my understanding the hydrologist will be out the thirteenth through the seventeenth, correct?
That's correct.
So, the nineteenth should fit within those timeframes.
That is correct. And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as part of the notification requirements, obviously, the applicant and staff will need to prepare a legal advertisement and letters of notification. And if you choose to accept the date as recommended on the nineteenth, would you be so kind to include in your motion a specific time that you might want to consider this, so we could publish accordingly?
One o'clock.
Chairman, I would suggest two o'clock, because if we're going to eat lunch and break for lunch, then we'll be back by two for sure.
Two o'clock?
That's fine. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners?
That would give us three hours till five, and then homeless shelter by six, so.
It's closed until we get that lease.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We can meet up later.
So, do we need a motion on this, or no? We don't know? Do we need a motion?
Yes, please. Just have a motion. Motion? We need a motion. Make a motion that we bring it back or bring it to us on the nineteenth at two o'clock as a special meeting. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Barone, a second by Commissioner Blackenhorn. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got a quick question, Edward. So, this is... Where this is going to be, under the old land use regulations, because, right? I mean, the... Bob?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
The procedure that we think is appropriate and that the appellant has agreed to is that the procedural factors will be done under the new land use code. The substantive will be done under the old.
Yeah, I thought you were quoting the new code for the notice, so I was wondering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
All right. Go to item B. Discussion, considerations, and decisions regarding the following. DFA Resolution Number Two Thousand Fourteen, Two Thousand Fifteen, Physical Year Resolution requesting to adjust the Physical Year Two Fifteen Preliminary Budget to transfer temporary cash from the General Fund Zero One Zero One to New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Service Fund Two Two Ninety.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm sorry, but we need to go back and do item A first, unfortunately, so.
Oh, I thought we had done it. Go to item A. Discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the following. DFA Resolution Number One, Two Fourteen, Two Fifteen, Physical Year Resolution requesting to adjust the Physical Year Two Fifteen Preliminary Budget to transfer temporary cash from the General Fund to Senior Citizens Fund Two Nineteen.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. I stand you before you to request ratification of DFA Resolution Number One, requesting to amend the two thousand fifteen preliminary budget to allow for a temporary cash transfer in the amount of thirty-five thousand from the General Fund to the Senior Citizens Fund. A cash advance has been requested from AAA to Taos County, and that money should be arriving at the end of the month. Once that money comes back to Taos County, we'll transfer the money back to the General Fund.
And let me ask this question. They have agreed to send the money?
Yes, they have. It's actually in their papers to provide a one-twelve cash advance.
Commissioners?
Move to approve? I'll go ahead in second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Blackenhorn, a second by Commissioner Barone. Call for the vote.
And Chairman, before we go on, I just want to turn to Mr. Archuleta. Mr. Archuleta, everything seems to be running... I mean, the negotiations with AAA and the state and everything has...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Barone, that's a loaded question there. What... Actually, what happened this last month, or this last pay period, was that AAA had not received the funds yet from aging and long-term services. And so, because of that, we didn't have the one-twelve that had been promised to Taos County prior to. And so, late last week, we actually had to do some juggling amongst ourselves and talk with DFA to take out some money out of the General Fund in order to pay payroll over at Ancianos. And so, we were able to do that, make payroll. Staff was happy. Services are being provided. Meals are being provided, and everything's moving along slowly. So, this is basically some cleanup paperwork, but it also is going to ensure that if we have... So this is basically some cleanup paperwork, but it also is gonna ensure that if we have any of these problems in the future, that we're able to draw some money down in order to do that. The reimbursement will come from AAA as soon as they receive their allocations from aging long-term services. And so we're hoping to have those by mid-month is, is my understanding. And so we've got the commitment from them, but as soon as they have the money to write the check, then they'll, they'll do that and send it over to us. So it's, it's been a juggling act, but we, staff has been very diligent. We've had several meetings. The Treasures Office, Finance Office have all worked together to ensure that the services are provided and that staff at the Ancianos program are getting paid just like any other staff member in Taos County.
And I know it's an integral part of our community, you know, and I just want to make sure that, you know, all the funds are coming in the way they should be coming in and, and that we're not gonna be left holding the bag, so to speak, because, you know, it's, it's one of them things that we kinda went out on a limb and, you know, that we're out there a little bit, and we just want to make sure that that limb don't break off and we land up in the river, so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, I would hope not. Check's in the mail like they say, but we haven't received it yet. I don't think that aging and long-term services are going anywhere. They have an obligation to provide these funds. The tax dollars and services are in place, and so we, you know, we have to work with our sister government, which is the state of New Mexico, to ensure that we continue to provide this service to, to the Ancianos program. And so I, I think it'll, once, once the money starts flowing in, I think everything will be, will be good and, and we'll just continue moving down that line.
Thank you, Steve.
Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Go to item D, this B, discussion, consideration, and decisions regarding the following, DFA Resolution Number 2, 2014-2015 fiscal year, a resolution requesting to adjust fiscal year 2015 preliminary budget to transfer temporary cash from the general fund 0101 to NM Aging and Long Term Services 2219.
Again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is just seeking ratification of what already had transpired last week. These are monies that'll be gonna be going to the senior companion program and the foster grandparent program. We haven't had any payroll for them yet, but we're just anticipating that the process will be the same to get the monies also from New Mexico Aging and Long Term Services. So this is just to cover the month of July until the monies do come in.
Commissioners?
Move to approve?
And I'll second, and Steve has same scenario.
Sir?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Blackenhorn, second by Commissioner Brony. Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
You're welcome. Go to item number 11, County Manager Report and Matters. A, discussion, consideration, and decisions regarding the following, authorization for county manager to enter into month-to-month contracts with Stray Hearts. Start, Archuleta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good to see you again. I stand before you again this morning. As you know, last, or two weeks ago, Taos County entered, actually approved a contract for Stray Hearts. And within that contract, there were certain provisions that Taos County was asking for. The biggest one and, and the, the biggest obstacle was being that we have two board members appointed by the Taos County Commission to the Stray Hearts Board. Stray Hearts Board of Directors and actually CEO decided that that was something that they didn't want, and because of that, they retained a, an attorney, Mr. Steven Nadelson, to do some contract negotiations with us. Because services in Taos County continue to run and because we continue to pick up animals on our streets, we needed to move quickly. And under my authorization of, under $20,000, I could enter into a month-to-month contract, which would be about a month and a half, about 45 days maybe, of services for that contract services with Stray Hearts. What I stand before you is a permission to actually continue to end, enter into a month-to-month contract after the $20,000 threshold has been met, and to continue to do that and negotiate with Stray Hearts and with their attorney at this point to figure out what we're gonna do. At some point, I'm, I'm thinking that it's gonna come back to the commission. We're expecting some type of counterproposal from Stray Hearts that we would bring to the commission. But in the meantime, we still have to do business. We have to make sure that the animals are being picked up, that they're being put over at Stray Hearts and adopted out properly or disposed of properly, whatever takes place. But my authority runs out after about 45 days of service out there. So I'm asking the commission to allow me to continue to do a month-to-month with Stray Hearts until this gets taken care of.
Commissioners?
And Chairman, you know, we're in the same situation at the town. The town has entered into a month-to-month contract with them, and the other portion is being negotiated at this point.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I read in the paper was there, there was a discussion at the town that favored doing something similar to what the hospital does. It seemed to me that was a pretty reasonable solution. You'd have to have a committee, though, that would then choose four board members. And if, if the committee was made up of elected officials from the town and the county, maybe a couple of board members and a couple of citizens like they do at the hospital, it seems to me that that, that might be a good solution just for matters of discussion since you're in negotiations. Then the, the hospital board still has the right to say no, but they never do. I mean, because, you know, you've got a committee of elected officials and other board members, so they would really have to have a, a very good reason to say no to it. So maybe that's a solution. My, my only issue with extend, extending your authority is I wouldn't want it to go on for too long. I would like to put some limit to the negotiations and also make sure that, I'm sure you are doing this, but make sure that staff is considering other options in the event that, that we're unable to work something out.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Malone has been actually in, I think, telephone conversation with Mr. Nadelson at this point. The, the attorney from Stray Hearts, staff is looking at different options. We have called Rio Reba to talk to them. We've also been talking to some local community providers within Taos County to see if those are options out there. Our hope would be that we could straighten this out within the next 30 to 60 days, and we would have business as usual and continue to move down the line. We had not thought of the option of what the hospital's been doing. I think that's, that's an excellent option. It's something that we'd have to bring back to the commission if that was a counterproposal from Stray Hearts, and then see if the commission would move in that direction. But we'll, we'll see what that proposal brings forward.
So Mr. Archuleta, you would want this authorization for 45 days or a little longer?
Actually, a little longer if possible. And the, the reality of that is that time just unfortunately seems to fly, and we, I initiated my authorization to enter into this contract so we could continue to do business until I could get in front of the commission. My authorization will run out in about 45 days, cause that's a $20,000 threshold. So, you know, if we could do an additional 45 days after that or 60 days, Mr. Malone, do you have a, any sense as to how far, maybe two, three months, maybe?
If we did 90 additional days, and that would be two 45 day periods, that would put a limit and would give us plenty of time.
So then under motion, it would have to be 90 days from today, right? Or?
90 days from when my 45 day runs out.
The current, and it's, we use the term month-to-month, but it was actually done for 45 days, runs out August the 15th because it run, ran from January, from July 1. So it would start on August the 15th.
And, and on, I guess September, on October?
November. They went till Thanksgiving to negotiate a contract. I don't, it's a long time. September, October, November. It would run out November 15th. And, and of course, you, you wouldn't just, I mean, you might be able to negotiate sooner.
Or you can bring it back in November 15th.
We were actually hoping that a counterproposal would be in front of this commission today, but as soon as the attorney brings that forward, we'll be more than happy to bring that in front of the commission for approval. So it's just sort of a threshold. This is the, the time limit that we're putting on. Actually, you set policy, so if you want it 45 days, that's fine also. It's up to you guys.
Well, let's just give him till November 15th.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
90 days?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's good enough. That fair enough?
That is.
By then, we can build pens if we need to, correct?
We do need to vote on that, yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved, to approve?
Second.
Got a book, motion by Commissioner Brony, a second by Commissioner Blackenhorn. Call for the vote.
Yes, and, and to clarify, I guess, so just want to make sure to clarify that we are, or...
November 15th.
Extending the contract on a month-to-month basis till November 15th, is that correct?
Giving Mr. Archuleta the authority to do that.
Okay.
Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, go to item B, a discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the following, to allow county staff to submit RFP to host New Mexico Association of Counties Annual Conference and Committee to Host County Requirements for NMAC. Mr. Hanamio?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Chairman Romero has asked that staff submit a request for proposal to host the annual conference. It'll either be in June 20th through 24th, 2016, or June 19th through 23rd, 2017. Part of the requirements of submitting an RFP is we need commission meeting minutes approving and authorizing the staff to submit a RFP. It's an estimated $215,000 tax benefit, well, not tax benefit, in spending that would come to the town and the county by hosting the conference. And it's estimated there's 600 to 650 attendees that would attend. Part of the requirements of the host county is that we set up a steering committee of volunteers of, from the Chamber of Commerce as well as staff and elected officials. We need to have 50 to 125 volunteers, and we need to assist with meeting spaces, hotel rooms, door prizes. What I was planning to do is meet with the school superintendent and then also go to each of the hotels. There's a questionnaire that the hotels need to fill out, committing to the number of rooms that they commit, could commit to for a room block. We need also to provide security for the evening social functions. We'd also need to provide transportation between the hotels and the meeting facilities and off-site social events. We also need to identify location for the golf tournament, which we could do that, and for Public Works rodeo. And also, we need to commit for in-kind contributions, meaning our staff time as well as, or it could be a cash contribution of anywhere from 15 to $30,000. So those are part of the requirements that we would need to commit to if we do submit the RFP.
You need approval for that?
I need approval for that, and it's due August 1st, so we'd be working on this for the next two weeks to submit it on time if approved.
So move for approval, Chairman. I think this is one of those things that can bring some great opportunities to our community and fill up, put heads in beds and, and meals on tables and, you know, I think it's, as long as it doesn't compete, you know, what was those dates again?
It's June 20th through 24th, 2016, and June 19th through 23rd, 2017. And a decision will be made on, the Board of Directors meeting on October 17th.
Okay, great.
I'll, I'll second that. I, I hope we get it. It would be a great thing. Weather up here is better in June than it is in Clovis, so we should have something going for us there.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brony, a second by Commissioner Blackenhorn. Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Commissioners, can we take a five-minute break?
Sure. So moved to, take a five-minute break.
Break.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 So do we have a motion come back in the session?
So moved.
Second? We got a motion by Commissioner Blackenhorn, a second by Commissioner Brony. Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, we go to item number 12, Commissioner Report and Matters. A, discussion, consideration, and decisions regarding the following, whole court, whole county courthouse RFP, Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of ideas on RFPs that I, that I wanted to present to the board, and the main thing is I don't want to see the, the courthouse just remain stagnant. I'd like to see some movement, as we all would. The, the first suggestion has to do with the Main Street program, and I think it's important to put out a request for proposal for an executive director on the Main Street program. I think if we could find the right person for that job to get us in, in good stead, in good relations with the state, all of our paperwork in order, make the appropriate connections with our legislators and Secretary Barella, and then organize and analyze all the potential sources of funding. I know that there's been a couple of sources that have been talked about, and I believe that they are out there. And I think if, if we had the right person running the Main Street program, then the money would be there. I think that we could raise the $200,000 or $300,000 required to at least get the elevator, get the bathrooms completed, and stucco and roof, you know. I just, I just want to see something happen along those lines. And as we heard last time from a lot of people, including Mayor Commissioner Brony, was that this is a perfect place for the town and the county to work together. The old courthouse is, is a, a perfect way for us to join forces. I guess currently the Main Street program is with the town, but it seems to me that if the town and the county joined together on such an RFP and agreed to fill that post and, and share the cost for that post, that we could make a big move in, in the right direction in terms of getting the capital improvements completed. And, and the other RFP that I'm interested in is one for the, the rental unit that the community center currently has. I know that Mr. Malone is working on a lease that would satisfy DFA for that space, and I don't believe that the community center is going to be able to afford the, the cost of that lease. The, at, at minimum, the, the base value of that space is what the Candle Factory paid for years. And I don't know exactly what that number is, but it didn't, it, it doesn't seem to me, or it didn't seem to me from the presentation made by the community center that they would be able to afford that. And so with that looming ahead of us, I think we should make a move to issue an RFP to find out what's out there in the community for that space. A tenant who could afford the rent, provide some income that could go back into the building, and hopefully provide more foot traffic to make the rest of the building work better. If you, if you had an anchor tenant who actually could afford the rent and do that, I think it would also make, whoever was in charge of getting the, the grants and the funding for the capital improvements, it would make their job easier. So that is what I wanted to discuss. I, I wanted to hear from staff and, and the other board members as to what they thought of that. If we did do an RFP, I would also suggest that we use that to work with the town and, and form a committee to choose whoever would, would have that space. So there could be an elected official from the town and the county as part of that committee, and whoever else people deemed important to be on it. So those are my ideas, and I wanted to hear if there were any comments regarding them. I know Commissioner Romero would comment if we had him here, but... I know Commissioner Romero would comment if we had him here, but Commissioner Blankenhorn, I'm still actually trying to get him on the phone, so we'll continue to try throughout the discussion. Just to answer a couple of questions fairly quickly. The Main Street designation is with the town of Taos currently. I know that the mayor and the city manager have sent Taos County a request to partner with them on the Main Street project. That's a decision that will come in front of this commission, and the commission will have to do. So at this point, the process of RFPing for a director for the Main Street project would probably have to come through the council and through the mayor's side of the House in order to do that. We have verified that Taos County does not have that designation, and the MOU that had been sent to Secretary Barella had never actually been signed, and so we don't have that. Staff has been working to look at alternatives for funding. Last week, in a meeting with staff, I did direct Mark and Elsa, and I believe somebody else was going to help you guys, Malesia, to go over and do a complete inventory of the Old Courthouse. What I meant by that is, you know, anything and everything that we have in there. I also wanted to look at the renovations that we had done over the last year at the Old Courthouse. And then I also wanted to look at occupancy. Who's there? Who's paying rent? Who has a contract? What events are planned at the Old Courthouse today, tomorrow, and in the future? And to get a report back to administration on that so that we could report to the commission. That report is in process, and we should have that available, Mark, by.
Chairman, members of the question. I believe Elsa and Malesia are putting together a binder of sorts with photos and the report, and I'll provide them with any information that they request on my behalf. But we did visit the Old County Courthouse. I went ahead and unlocked doors for them, gave them a brief history as to what was going on. They took a lot of photos. You'll see those photos. And we took some notes, and I believe that they're working on that report, and they'll get it to Mr. Archuleta.
So we should have that report fairly quickly with also a calendar of events, and which of those events actually have contracts, which ones are negotiated, all of those issues fairly quickly. Taos County has met with a financial advisor with our finance department and has looked at a couple of different options. I agree with Commissioner Blankenhorn that an anchor tenant at the Old Courthouse would be something that is definitely needed, something that would help us start generating some funds over there, and something that we could move forward. The policy for the commission that needs to be decided is what type of anchor tenant do we want in there? I know that Commissioner Romero wanted to be on, or present today, or at least by the phone, because his push is that we have some type of anchor tenant in there that would be from the Arts and Cultural District that represents what the Old Courthouse is. Are we wanting to attract a JCPenney's? Are we wanting to attract a Walgreens down there? I mean, that kind of discussion needs to take place so that we can look at that. I also think that there's a lot of possibilities for attractions to the Old Courthouse. I know the town had made a presentation to the commission, and I think they are hopefully going to come back and make a future presentation to the commission. We don't, you know, currently have in our budget money set aside for the Old Courthouse. Mark has been using a lot of his budget, a lot of his staff time, to do a lot of the renovations. We added that up, and, you know, last year came close to about $100,000 that we spent at the Old Courthouse. We do have some options that we'd like to discuss with the commission. There is a current loan that's out there that we're looking at possibly refinancing for a lower rate and cutting off about nine or 10 years off the loan. And we could possibly cash out about $750,000 to $800,000 off that loan if the commission chooses to go that route. That would be a possibility for that. We would more than make up for that difference on just interest that we're not paying for about 10 years on the current rate and the current loan that we're out there looking at. That loan is very specific to recreational or historical buildings, and so it would only be able to be used for something like that. But of course, we could always repurpose that loan also to, you know, do other activities. If we could get some kind of anchor tenant in there, we could also get maybe a partnership with the town to bring in some alternative money to help renovate that whole courthouse. So those are definitely things that we're looking at.
Mr. Archuleta, Chairman.
Go ahead. I'll wait.
If I may, you know, we put some work into the Old County Courthouse in the last, I'd say, three years, little by little. In this last year, we did a big push. A majority of all those spaces are rentable. There's a few of them that need some painting, and one in particular where we lost, we had a water leak a few years back, and some plaster fell down from the roof. But other than that, the Old County Courthouse, when you look at the interior, it's in pretty good shape. All I'm looking to do this year, pending approval from the manager as time goes on, and depending on where we go, is to replace the entry doors on there. We have the old, original doors. We want to get them refinished and put them on the entry. Because right now, if you look and you visit the Old County Courthouse, we had a few break-ins a few years back where somebody pried the door open with a crowbar, and it's kind of been band-aided per se, and I would like to redo that and put some ADA hardware on the doors on the inside, as well as do just some finishing painting and some plaster work. Other than that, the interior is in excellent shape. It is an old building. I think the main issues we have and are going to take a lot of money is some electrical upgrades. We really need to upgrade the electrical system in there. There's a lot of breakers that are unlabeled, circuits that are unlabeled, and they tend to trip pending the usage of the tenants. We need restrooms in there, some ADA restrooms. Those are the big things. And I have a real quick bucket list here. Electrical needs to be upgraded. We need some ADA-compliant restrooms that will satisfy the needs of the public. The exterior needs to be plastered, and we really need to come to an idea on what we're going to do with the portal. Other than that, and then elevator, you know, the elevator issue, but I think that's down the road, and that's going to take some big dollars. The Old County Courthouse is, it's in a good position to continue to move forward right now. And I think with the money we spent this last year, and the little bit I want to allocate and spend this coming year, we could get that in great condition and ready to go. Just wanted to give you guys that little.
Commissioner Baronia.
Thank you, Chairman. Mark, thank you, guys. You guys have done a lot of work in that building, the building and those rooms that you guys have replastered. We have, I mean, they look wonderful. I want to thank you and your staff. I've been, I was there during the time when you guys were working there, several occasions, and those, that work is great. It looks wonderful. You know, one of the things that we, I think the town and the county both paid for a plan for that, for the Old County Courthouse. It was one of those plans that I think in the last presentation that was made to the county, that we need, I know it's a plan that I think is good for everyone. We just need to find a way or an avenue to move this plan forward, whether it's through the town, through the county, a joint venture. This is a building that is an icon on the plaza. It's a building that, I guess, brings people to the plaza. It could continue to bring more people to the plaza. You know, there, I've seen the TENS group, the Entrepreneurial Network group that hosts meetings there, the Chamber of Commerce hosts meetings there, and, you know, the county has been gracious enough to host. We have a mayor and council reception there on Saturday at 3:00, and I believe you guys have all gotten invitations to that. And we ask you to show up. But this is one of those buildings in our community that really, for eight years now, I've been, seven and a half years, one of the first meetings that I had as a county commissioner was trying to put something in that that would work for everybody. We had Gene Sanchez on the council, we had a number of people, and one of the biggest things is the ADA requirements that haven't been met. You know, we need an elevator, we need restrooms, and even the restrooms that are there, to say that we could put additional renters or additional people in there with the restrooms that we currently have, I don't think it's, would, I don't think they would support the additional, I want to say, staff. Yes, I want to see that we would move, to see what kind of RFP that we could put out, to see what kind of businesses would actually be interested in actually being relocated there or help bring that up. But again, we need, as a joint venture, I believe, to move forward and trying to find the money to carry out that plan that's already been formulated. So, you know, with this said, I think, you know, the RFP is a start, because at least we would know if there would be any businesses out there that would even be interested in moving in there. But again, ADA, restrooms, and the alleys, who actually owns those alleys?
I believe that, from my understanding, the county owns it. That alley, you know, there's uneasement per se, I guess, and they built on it, and the question is, yeah, who owns the alleys? But right now, the county has taken ownership of it. We know the tenants that are in those spaces do pay rent to the county. We oversee the maintenance on the buildings that were built over those alleys.
And then in your last presentation to us, I guess a lot of the sewer is in one of those alleys?
Yes, sir. Under smoke signals, that was an alley at one point in time when the building was originally built, and the sewer was designed to be underneath that alley. There was, you know, nowadays, you don't build over a gas line or a main sewer line, and I guess at that point in time, they didn't take that into consideration. But the sewer line does go underneath, smoke signals, and it is an issue. We've done our best to address it. We, I've had it camrot or genite, that's the equipment that was utilized. They put a camera in that sewer line, and it's flowing. But I think what's going on is we have a long run from the upstairs restroom and the lower restroom downstairs. You know, the waste comes down, and then needs to proceed down, and it takes a bend, and then it goes out the alley and into the street there by the town. That's a real long run, and the building has real low water pressure. So what happens is a lot of waste will tend to build up. But we've been maintaining it regularly and keeping an eye on it. But when we get an influx of people, there's more than likely going to be issues. And we've seen that already with two of our largest functions there at the courthouse.
And this is one of the areas, you know, that we continue to talk about, public restrooms and, you know, revitalization of the downtown or the plaza area. This is one of them buildings that is perfect for that, and hopefully, we can come to some kind of agreement between the town and the county to move that forward. I mean, if we can find the money, I know the town is presently hiring a grants writer. There's opportunities through a number of the, through the Main Street program and a number of these nonprofits that have funded other downtown areas that are waiting for applications that we could submit. So whether we do it jointly or one or the other, I think this is a big move, and that county is, that county building is ripe for this kind of atmosphere, so.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if I may, thank you for your comments on the work. You know, it was a real honor for me and my staff to be able to get in there and do the work ourselves. I got in there, and I plastered myself along with my staff. Each one of us had a trowel, and Earl Salazar did a lot of the carpentry work with the assistance from the rest of the guys, and they really were happy to get over there and took pride in the work, being that it's such a historical building, and that work's going to be there for a long time. I haven't plastered in 10 years, you know. When I did construction about 10 years ago, and it was really nice to get in there and kind of work some of the bugs out and then got it going. I would like to, with approval from the county manager, you know, down the road, is invest some, a little bit of some of my budget, which I did budget for, to continue, because that is a county building until, you know, we, well, it's always going to be a county building, until maybe there's a lease that goes forward with the town. I don't know if that's going to, how that's going to go. But we would like to invest some more money in there and just continue to pick away at it. You know, I'm not going, my budget is small based off all the other buildings we need to maintain, but it is my plans to continue to upgrade that facility.
On this RFP, you're suggesting Commissioner Blankenhorn is for the county to put it out or do a joint RFP? What's your suggestion?
Well, the first one is, the first RFP is going to take some additional discussions with the town and the county. But the second one, you know, we certainly could do on our own. We've got the chairman, I guess, coming on here, so.
You want to call him on the, call him on the.
Okay, let me call you on the conference. Let me call you on the conference, hold on. I'll be right.
Okay.
You know, if I may, Chairman, members of the commission, we've got some really good tenants in there right now. You know, there's some tenants that, you know, might not be under contract or might not be paying rent, but, you know, Mr. Whaley's here in the audience, and I've worked with him, he's consulted and called me, and he takes it upon himself to give tours of the Old County Courthouse. Okay, go ahead.
You're on speakerphone, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm playing your part today. This is Commissioner Durant. We got Mark, we got Mark Flores talking about the Old Courthouse, so hold on.
So I was just wanting to touch base and, you know, let you guys know that in my collaboration and duties as a facilities manager for the county, I do keep an eye on the building, and we got some good tenants in there. But right now, there's a little bit of a void, and we're trying to get a handle on what's going on right there. I think that there's, we need to change some locks on some of the doors, we're not sure who has keys and so forth. But with tenants like Mr. Whaley and the Taupu Co-op, I'd like to see people like that stay in there, that take ownership and pride of the building. But that's going to be up to you guys and the RFP and what direction we're going.
Thank you, Mark, and, you know, thanks for all the work you've done. I think you've done a wonderful job with limited resources.
Thank you, sir.
But clearly, you know, in order to make that building work, we need the elevator, and we need the bathrooms, and we need more than what your department has resources for. And so that was the whole point of the first RFP. I think that, you know, and I don't want to necessarily look for this money in our budget and keep the ownership in Taos County. I don't think that that's important. I think that what's important is that we join forces with the town and find, and gather the resources from that collaboration. And I really believe that the key is finding an executive director for the Main Street program that can organize all of that. So I'm not suggesting any action today on that, I just meant that as a matter of discussion. But on the second RFP, you know, the issue is not so much the type of tenant that we would like to see, but, I mean, it is that too, but one of the practical considerations is what's DFA going to approve? And my understanding, and of course, I'll ask Mr. Malone to chime in on this, but my understanding is that DFA is going to require fair value for the space that the community center currently occupies. And fair value would be established at least by what the Candle Factory has, had been paying in the past. You can also do a trade for in-kind services if the function is a governmental function. And, but in the case of the community center, you know, as much as we like the fact that the community centers have a place to sell their wares, it's not strictly a governmental function, and so I doubt that DFA would approve of it as an in-kind service. So it's either cash or in-kind services, and based on what I know, I don't believe that the community center can satisfy either of those requirements for DFA. And so I'm suggesting that we consider that if that is the result, what's our next step? And I like, as Commissioner Baronia said, why not find out what's out there? Mr. Malone, can you correct me or make comments about the lease that you're working on?
The only, the only comments that I would add to what you already said, Commissioner Blankenhorn, is that it is correct that in order for DFA to approve a lease, there's going to have to either be cash or in-kind services. They have approved in-kind services. They have approved in-kind services, for example, in the past, from the typical types of operations that a community center operates, you know, community meetings, that sort of thing. I don't, I don't know what they will or won't approve, but the closer it comes to a government function, the more likely that they'll approve it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if I may, one thing that's really helped us out, and I don't know how this will move forward, is we have a couple tenants in there that, you know, provide us, provide tours and tour guides and they unlock the doors and so forth. I don't know if that would be considered in-kind services, but that does help the county out quite a bit. It does help the building out because most of the time, we will leave the mural room locked for fear of vandalism and so forth. And by having a tenant there and a lot of, some, they've taken it upon themselves, which I must thank them, and there's a few of them, they'll go up there and they'll give a tour of the mural room and brief history of the building and direct them to look at the old jail and so forth. That's really helped the building out because you get tourists in here, some of them don't even know what that building has, they just walk in there and, oh, have you seen the murals upstairs? Have you seen the old jail? Oh, is this an old courthouse? And give a little brief history. To find a tenant like, or for executive director, whoever we get is housed in there, you know, it'd be great to have somebody that gives tours and could explain the building and, you know, we're talking about a full-time position here and pay and benefits and so forth. Maybe one of our tenants could provide in-kind services and we make an agreement of sorts with that. That would really help us out because I can't be there giving tours all the time, you guys can. We can't have staff there.
And Chairman, you know, a cultural center, you know, if we had a cultural center in there eventually, you know, but again, you know, we've got to start from the ground up. We need a, we need an elevator, we need to make it ADA compliant, we need to have restrooms. But a cultural center with walking tours, you know, it can be, you know, expanded a little bit so that walking tours out of there, you know, the, the.
Harwood and the New Street, there's very close proximity.
Yes, and there's a lot of possibilities that can come out of there. And, you know, I've sat in there a number of times and we watched people, a number of people come up to the mural room and a lot of times they're by themselves. And it would be great if we had somebody to be able to do tours within that, but also within, you know, the downtown area. And that's something that I would love to see.
I completely agree with you, sir. If we could, and it's my understanding, you know, thinking that if we could get somebody that could give tours and give a history of Taos, we have a greater chance of those people returning back to Taos. You have your one-time visitors or maybe your two-time visitors, they're here, you know, they pick up some literature at their motel or in the restaurant and so forth. But to give, have someone give you an oral history and take you and give you a little tour of the downtown area, I think would definitely bring people back again and again because they're not going to be able to see everything, you know, in that one visit. But if they don't understand what Taos has to offer, then they may not return.
Mr. Malone?
There doesn't seem to be anybody here currently from purchasing, but just to speak from their perspective on an RFP, there would need to be some fairly clear criterion in the RFP and as to what we were looking for. I think the county manager alluded to that earlier when he said, you know, what kind of a tenant are we, are we talking about? And so it would seem to me to make sense if there's serious consideration for putting out an RFP like this, that staff come back with several different alternatives with different criterion so that the commission can make a decision as to what we're looking for. For example, one thing would just be, we're just looking for the guys that can pay the most rent. I don't think that's anything anybody's interested in. We could have something that's heavily oriented toward cultural or historical activities. We could have somebody that's oriented toward tourist activities. We could have somebody that's oriented toward economic incubation. There's all sorts of alternatives, but to make an RFP meaningful, it has to have a set of criterion. And I'm not arguing for any particular position, I just think staff should probably make available to this commission some alternatives on those kinds of criterion.
Chairman Romero, who you got? Any comment?
Thank you, Commissioner Durdon. I just got off the plane now, I was in New Orleans. I appreciate the fact that I'm be able to be a part of this conversation. I'm hearing some good things so far, you know, I think, you know, I agree, we need to create a cultural center. The old courthouse on the plaza is probably one of the most prominent buildings that is owned by the county. And, well, it is the most prominent building, you know, and it's, it's up there with places to see as far as I can, I am concerned with St. Francis Church and Taos Pueblo and other historic buildings. And so the county needs to move forward and once and for all, making sure that it's protected, you know, that it's kept in the hands of the county. I like the idea of the partnership, I like the idea of the community center idea, I like the idea of the cultural center. I think it is the best building that we have in, in order to showcase the richness of the multicultural society that we have in Taos County. Everywhere you go in San Fe and in Albuquerque, Paso, Las Cruces, they all have a building like this that kind of highlights what the various cultures are. And I don't mean just the Hispanic, but the Native American and the Anglo and the artist and everyone else that has made Taos what it is today. As far as an RFP, I think I agree with our attorney that we need to have staff come back with some ideas. As Chairman, I would really like to see a group of people come together. Since this issue came up in the newspaper recently, I've gotten a lot of calls from constituents that are concerned. These are constituents from the historic society and from other groups in Taos that are concerned. They don't want to see something too commercial to where, you know, it completely blinds the idea of the building. They don't want to see a bar, they don't want to see, there's not, there's, they feel that it's not necessary to see another commercial venture, say, for example, a brewery or a bar, I'll throw this one out, or a strip joint for whatever, you know. They want to see something that is good for the community, that's going to bring everybody in together. And, and I agree with that, that's what we have to do. I hope that the commission doesn't intend to make an official decision today. I was hoping maybe that this is an item that can come before the commission as a work-study type of idea and that we can look at it closer without having to have the pressure of making a decision on it just yet. I also, Commissioner Durdon, Mr. Chairman Durdon, you know, we need to look at what needs to get done with the building and we need to move forward with trying to bring in those monies. There's a lot of monies out there that our staff needs to aggressively look for in order to improve and make improvements on, on this building. For us to say that there isn't anything, that's not true. There's, there's a lot of monies out there that are available, it's just that we need to aggressively seek them.
So then Chairman Romero, then you do agree that staff bring back to us something at a later date?
Yes, sir. Yes, Commissioner, Chairman Durdon, I think that's a good idea that they, you know, we, I really feel Commissioner Durdon and commissioners that we need to set up a task force like we had in previous years when I was county commissioner, a task force that's going to work really hard at bringing in not only the ideas, but also the, the money to get this, this project done.
Okay. Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I agree that, that staff should bring back some suggestions for an RFP and that we not make a decision on this today. Chairman Romero, I think before, before you had joined us, one of the suggestions that I made, which again, isn't subject to a vote today, but in finding the funds, I really think that the key is a good executive director in the Main Street program and that the town and the county should work together on finding that person who could really then organize and effectively raise the funds necessary to complete the structure as needed, as per the, the plan from David Henry and other, other iterations of that. And I agree with you, the money is definitely out there, but we do need to get organized. I think the Main Street program is the perfect vehicle for that. And so I hope that we can move in that direction with the town. As far as your other comments go, you know, my preference has, I've always said, my preference is that as an anchor tenant, we could have, hopefully attract somebody that could be a commercial success, which would help not only the maintenance of the building, but would help enhance the rest of the building as a cultural center. And so I think that, you know, we have some common area in, in regards to our vision of the use of that incredible building, but maybe, maybe not precisely on that, on that main, most valuable space that we have. And so the only other thing I have to say is that when staff brings us back criterion, it has to be realistic in terms of what DFA is going to allow.
Right.
You know, the, the square footage of that place is not, is not going to be anything, obviously, a Walgreens or any big chain is not going to be interested, it's a small place. So, you know, we're not talking about any kind of commercial activity, obviously, you know, big boxes or strip joints is not what we're looking for here, so. But, but you do need, you do need to be realistic in terms of, you know, the attorney's opinion about what DFA is going to approve of. And obviously, a commercial, a commercial project that was able to pay fair value would be of no objection from DFA, but it's possible that, it, it's, it's difficult for me to imagine how that particular space can be, can be given away. Absolutely, as Mark said, you know, there's, there's room in some of the other spaces that are less valuable where you could easily, I think, come up with a formula that DFA would approve of in terms of in-kind services for, you know, making tours of the building or even economic development once we get a leader in place.
And, Mr. Chairman, thank Commissioner Blank, Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes, thank you.
Another thought that just kind of ran through my mind now is possibly if we could get a professional property manager, someone that would know what the value is of those individual spaces and see how much they in fact would, would lease for, I think would be a good idea and kind of work towards that goal of, of trying to rent the remaining spaces that don't have leases on them, based on what a professional property manager would, would suggest. And I'm sure we have a few of them in, in Taos that could maybe possibly be contracted for and, and give us an idea of what each, what a square foot is, is worth on an annual lease at the old courthouse. But before we do all of that, you know, in conversations that I've had with our manager and Mark Flores and everyone else involved, there are some very necessary improvements that we need to make. I think Mark, Mr. Flores suggested at the last meeting that, that we had, that the porch needs to be taken care of just as quickly as possible. But if we do have the money available for that and when it, or when it does become available, we also need to look at the fact that we, we need to reconstruct or do those repairs at a time where it's not going to affect the rest of the merchants on the plaza. You know, that's the last thing that we need to do is to disrupt the ability for them to get those, those tourists into their door, you know. And so we would have to do it at a time where it's slow in the season and the, the weather is also cooperating with us. So I'm so far agreeing with everything that I'm hearing, Mr. Chairman Durdon. I, I just feel that we need to discuss it thoroughly and, you know, hopefully, the next time around, staff has some ideas, some suggestions, and we also have some more definite answers from DFA as to what can be done.
Okay. Commissioner Barone?
And Chairman Romero, before we got you on the line, we did talk with Mark and about the work that's already been done and, and then we also talked about the plan that the town and county have both put money into to develop. The plan that I believe it's David Henry made a presentation to us with ADA, with the, bringing up the ADA, so it's compliant with ADA, actually putting an elevator and, and hopefully the restrooms and the sewer lines that need to be addressed, so. And the biggest thing is finding the money to move this whole thing forward, whether it be through Main Street or a number of these other nonprofits that have helped with the Main Street or with the other municipalities around the state that has been able to find monies through these different nonprofit organizations that have been set up to help downtown areas. So, you know, again, a collaborative effort between the town, the county, or one or the other. I think it's just an invaluable property that we have downtown that needs to be moved forward.
Mr. Chairman Romero, I just talked to staff and they said they can bring this, you know, some suggestions back by the 19th of August.
Second commission meeting in August.
The second, second meeting in August. So is that fine? That's okay with you?
And, Mr. Chairman, would, would that be in the form of a work-study possibly, or would it be an actual meeting?
I think we'll bring back some suggestions or what the commission wants to do by the 15th. Either we can make a decision then or we can continue and see what staff needs to bring.
Very good.
Okay?
Very good, very good. Thank you, Commissioner Durdon.
Okay, so you have a safe trip home.
I, I will. And there was another item, the, I don't know if Mr. Malone was going to discuss the item from executive session.
Oh, you want to stay on for that one?
Well, we can call him back.
Maybe what you can do is call me back when you do listen to that one.
Okay, we'll give you a call back there.
Any idea how long it'll, it'll be? I'm.
We'll call you back in five, 10 minutes.
The next item.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the next item, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. And then Commissioners and staff will bring us back.
That's the direction you'll be giving them?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move on now to item number 13, legal matters, discussion, consideration. The acquisition of real property, this matter may be discussed in closed session under Open Meetings Act, exemption 1015-1H8, which allows for discussion of property acquisition or disposal of real property. Discussion, consideration, and action may also take place in open meeting. So do we have a motion going to executive session?
So moved, check.
I have a motion by Commissioner Blankenhorn. Got a motion by Commissioner Blackenhorn, a second by Commissioner Barone, call for the vote.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
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 So do it down here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioners, do we have a motion to come back into regular session?
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Barone, a second by Commissioner Blackenhorn, call for the vote.
Chairman, you might mention for the viewing audience that we do have Commissioner Romero on, on the.
Commissioner, Chairman Romero's on a speakerphone also, so go ahead and call for the vote.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Commissioner Durant?
Yes.
Commissioner Barone?
Yes.
Chairman Romero?
Chairman, I want to go ahead and say yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Malone?
The county commission met in executive session to discuss the acquisition of real property pursuant to 10151H8 under the Open Meetings Act, which allows for such matters to be discussed in executive session. Only that matter was discussed, no action was taken, as I understand it. Action may be taken in open session at this time.
So moved to accept the county attorney's report.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Barone, a second by Commissioner Blackenhorn, to accept the county attorney's report, call for the vote.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Commissioner Durant?
Yes.
Commissioner Barone?
Yes.
Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioners, now do we have a motion to let the attorney and the Attorney Lopez?
Chairman, I make a motion that we move forward in the purchase of the real property that has been proposed.
I'll, I'll go ahead in a second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Barone, a second by Chairman Romero, call for the vote.
Commissioner Barone?
Yes.
Commissioner Durant?
Yes.
Commissioner Barone?
Yes.
Chairman Romero?
Yes, thank you.
And, uh, we go have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Barone, a second by Commissioner Blackenhorn, call for the vote.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Durant?
Yes.
Commissioner Barone?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you have a good ride home there, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Okay.
We'll see you, bye.